I'm going to call this meeting to order if anyone will stand for the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before starting, I would like to, we would like to thank the Mayfield Borough officials for allowing us here today, specifically Council President Janice Joyce, Council Vice President Diana Campbell, Councilman Ron Rezak?
Rejack.
Rejack. I'm sorry in advance for what I'm going to do to these names. And then the four councilwomen, Wendy Binakovitch.
Mary Ovich.
Oh, I'm not doing too good.
Let's go with the first ones.
Marian Petrokonas. Compliments of Frank Frazier, he told me how to pronounce that. Mary Rossler. Mayor Al Chelick. Borough Secretary Phyllis Jakovic.
Jaszkowicz.
Jaszkowicz. And Solicitor Attorney John J. Lawler. So, thank you very much for allowing us to be here today. Okay. Reading and approval of the minutes. I'm assuming everybody has an opportunity to review the minutes from the last meeting. I think it was November 17th, right? I don't know where they are, but. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
Motion. Second.
And the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opportunity for the public to address the board on agenda items only. Can you please go over to the microphone?
My name is Kevin. Is it working?
It's only for the camera.
Pardon?
It's only for this camera.
Okay. My name is Kevin McDonough. I'm a resident of Lackawanna County and a businessman in the county for a number of years. And I'm here today just to speak about the balanced budget. I have been working with Commissioner Sherrack and he asked me to get involved and help review this budget. I thought we came up with a number of good questions. And I see where you've been able to tackle it and get it down to 4. some odd million, which is great. It's great. And I think it was a great start. What I'm going to ask, okay, is if the three commissioners can't get together, Mr. Durkin, Ms. Granahan, over the next two weeks, table the vote for today, over the next two weeks, iron this out and see if we can't get a balanced budget. Now, I could want to know, but I think it's something that you owe us, okay? To sit down the three of you with Ms. Granahan and Mr. Durkin and see if you can't get this budget closer to a balanced budget. Table the vote today. December 15th is the next scheduled meeting and that's the deadline that you have for the budget. That's all I have. Thank you, commissioners. Counselors.
Tom. Okay, go ahead.
My name is Carlin Preate. I'm a retired CPA. I was formerly a partner on this engagement with the audit firm of Perney Randolph, so I'm pretty familiar with Lackawanna County and its budgets and finances and so forth and so on. I did have an opportunity to sit with Chris to review the budget in detail as far as the information that we did have. And quite candidly, I am a little disturbed about the way that the whole budget process, first off, was done. I mean, to the extent that the department heads were given 15 minutes to present the budgets in sessions and so forth and so on, and then there was no really discussion amongst all three commissioners to review all the different budget requests. But again, I did have an opportunity to look at this and quite candidly, it's a very irresponsible. It's a sham budget. A budget's supposed to have revenues versus unequal expenses. And anytime when you have expenses equal revenues, where's the difference going to come from? Okay, it comes from the surplus. Well, what's going to happen next year? You know, I think one of the changes from the original budget was one-time revenues. Well, what happens to the one-time revenues that are not there next year? So, you're going to say one-time revenues, well, who's paying the light bill next year? It's going to be the taxpayers. This is not right. This is not right. We looked through this budget. There was a lot of new positions in this budget. I see you did change from the sheriffs from 10 to 5, but there's a lot of other new positions in the budget that just said, well, do we really need them? Why are they in there? I mean, there's technology. We have technology advances and so forth. Why do we keep on adding personnel? We look at overtime. Overtime is out of control. Is anybody looking at overtime? It's just incredible. Are we competitively bidding all of our vendors for goods and services? I don't know. That's a question. Are we competitively bidding? And how often do we competitively bid? Some of the departments have expense line items indirect costs of over $1 million. Well, what is in there? What is in there when you say, well, wait a minute, is the budget being transparent or not? I agree with Kevin. We should probably, we don't need to pass this budget today. There's a lot of additional work that can be done that's scoured through each of these departments. And look at it and saying, hey, can I save 20,000 here, 50,000 here? That adds up to real money because next year, when we don't have, and the surplus keeps going down and we say, okay, I know when we use the surplus, we were concerned a couple of years ago when we had a tax increase, we said, well, wait a minute, it's going to impact our bond rating. We need to increase the taxes. Well, okay, what are we going to do next year? And who knows whether or not the deficit or the surplus coming in is 19.5 million dollars? That's an estimate. We don't know where the current year ends. I'm talking about 2021. We're operating at a deficit in 2021, okay? And that's despite a lot of one-time revenues. So, what happens? Where's the money going? I think we need to have a session where the commissioners, all three of them, with the finance department and with the county controller and saying, okay, let's take a look at these departments. And not just rubber stamp and saying, okay, whatever they gave us, we're going to approve. Because I think the taxpayers, we own better. We can do better. We should be able to do better than this. This is not a sound way to operate any kind of a business operating at a deficit. Especially then you add one-time revenues, it's even worse. Thank you.
Okay, do you want to address this at the time that we meet, at the time that we?
After we read the ordinance.
Yeah, so we'll address both of your comments after we read the ordinance. Ordinance, second reading, 21-0289, ordinance number 274, annual budget for the county of Lackawanna for the year 2022.
An ordinance from the county of Lackawanna, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, fixing the tax rate and enacting the budget for the year 2022 and the appropriate specific sums estimated to be required for the specific purposes of county government. Herein set forth during the current fiscal year, be it ordained and enacted, and it is hereby resolved and enacted by the Board of Commissioners of the county of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania, in section 1, that a tax be and the same is hereby levied on all property within the said county subject to taxation for county purposes for the fiscal year 2022 as follows. Tax rate for general county purposes, the sum of 46.90 mils on each dollar of assessed valuation, or the sum of 469 cents on each $100 of assessed valuation. For debt purposes, the sum of 1, 3.20 mils on each dollar of the assessed valuation, or the sum of 132.00 cents on each $100 of assessed valuation. For the purposes of the county library system, the sum of 2.82 mils on each dollar assessed valuation, or the sum of 28.20 cents on each $100 of assessed valuation. For the purposes of the cultural and education fund, the sum of 1.0 mils, or the sum of 1.00 cents on each $100 of assessed valuation. Total mileage for all purposes is a sum of 63.92 mils. Section 2. All prior ordinances or resolutions or parts thereof inconsistent herewith are repealed. Adopted at regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on December 1st, 2021, man and commissioner here to speak upon the budget and answer any of your questions is our CFO, Mr. Thomas Durkin, and the Budget Director, Ms. Mary Jo Ray.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning. As you're all aware, this is a budget that Revenue and Finance started putting together in July of this year. While the meetings with the department heads, as Mr. Preate explained, lasted approximately 15 minutes, as you're aware, the department heads actually are requested by July 1st of each year to put together a budget for their department, which is a zero-based process where they start at zero and build numbers to develop what their budget needs to be for the following year. And they have approximately a month to complete that process and input the budget into our financial system, after which our Budget Director takes all of those numbers, obviously gives the copies to the commissioners where necessary, and creates the tentative budget that we release on October 15th of each year with the intent that whatever is in that original budget may or may not be massaged before the second reading of the ordinance, which is determined by the county's Home Rule Charter. The second reading of the ordinance needs to be done under the terms of the Home Rule Charter by December 1st. So, that's why the meeting today has the second reading of the ordinance on the agenda so that we can comply with the Home Rule Charter requirement to have it done by December 1st. Anybody have any questions that I can answer?
What will happen to our bond rating when we keep nipping away at the surplus?
I don't know, honestly, Commissioner. I don't know at what level. I mean, overall, as we deplete the surplus, the accumulated surplus from prior years, as we deplete that, Standard &amp; Poor's and the other rating agencies don't look fondly on that. They, Standard &amp; Poor's, would like every municipality to maintain a fund balance, an accumulated fund balance, in excess of 10% of their annual budget expenditures. There is no hard and fast rule there. It's just, that's what Standard &amp; Poor's believes is a good number. The county's budget is about $145 million of expenditures this year, so the 10% is about $14 million. Lackawanna County, back in 2016, I believe it was, put a resolution on the books that is a fund balance resolution that essentially doesn't set the 10% threshold, but establishes a 5% threshold whereby the county resolution said that if at any time the county's accumulated surplus falls below the 5% as required in the resolution, the commissioners would have a two-year period from that time to restore the fund balance to 5%. 5% is not what Standard &amp; Poor's wants. As I said, it's about $145 million budget, so Standard &amp; Poor's is looking for at least $14.5 million as an accumulated surplus. More directly to answer your question, Commissioner, while I don't know how Standard &amp; Poor's figures things out, clearly, when we have deficit budgets that we're presenting, that is consuming the accumulated surplus that we have, there is a point in time where we will be downgraded. And I don't know if this budget will cause us to be downgraded or not. I just, I don't know what Standard &amp; Poor's is going to do. I have in the past told all the commissioners that it's certainly something that we need to be concerned about, that our accumulated surplus is depleting, and there is risk that if and when Standard &amp; Poor's decides to review the county's credit rating again, we may be downgraded. Is that clear? I'm sorry, Commissioner.
You know, we've had this discussion even when, hey, when I was a brand-new commissioner, it seems like a lifetime ago, the surplus was sacred. We can't touch the surplus. It's going to damage our bond rating for future loans and that's why we had to initiate a tax increase. We had to cover pension funds that were neglected for, I don't even remember, 13 or plus years. So, it was a very serious issue. I feel now I almost got my master's degree in Commissioner school in a short time, but you know, I'm still looking at our bond rating. I have to think down the road. I'm not worried about '22, '23. I'm worried about '24, '25 when we're bankrupt. So, and I agree with Mr. Preate, and I am going to make a motion to table this and look into it. I'm thrilled that we've gotten it down to 4.3. I think we can keep going. We owe it to the taxpayers. Statements were made the day we had to raise taxes that everybody was going to do everything they possibly could to trim the fat and cut the budget and save money. Well, we haven't done that. The costs are escalating. Insurance costs are escalating. I see they're down a little bit, but still, they go up every year. It's just astronomical what it costs. And I know my own family budget, what we're paying for heat, gasoline, food. It's just out of control, and I think it's time to rein this in and take a good, hard look. There's no rush, no rush whatsoever. We need to, we need to look, we owe it to the taxpayers. I'm a taxpayer.
If I may, Commissioner, you said about the insurance. I believe you're talking about the health insurance. While we were able to reduce the amount that we had included in the tentative budget that we released on October 15th, we were able to reduce that number, but the fact is, our health insurance has gone up from '21 to '22. It's just that we were able to reduce the increase based on the renewal. So, the insurance did go up. It's just that what we had estimated was going to go up was more than what Benetton told us it was going to increase, so we were able to get a little bit of relief there.
Thank you.
Tom, I'm going to ask you questions that I already know the answers to, but just for clarity for the public. So, what you just, first of all, what's our current surplus?
The current surplus is about $19.8 million.
Okay. Now, the...
Excuse me. That's the anticipated surplus at the end of 2021. The surplus from our 2020 budget was a little more than $20 million.
So, the estimated or anticipated surplus at the end of this year is $19.8 million?
That's correct.
Okay. And you're indicating that we should have at least 10% in there, or 14.5 million, for purposes of Standard &amp; Poor's and our bond rating, correct?
That's what Standard &amp; Poor's says is the minimal level that municipal governments should have as an accumulated surplus, 10%.
Okay. And then with regard to the health insurance, you initially estimated a 10% increase, but it ended up being only a 3%. Is that...
That is correct, Commissioner.
Okay. So, that's why we saw a decrease in...
About a million three decrease in the anticipated deficit because we were able to reduce the health insurance across the board.
Okay. What is the current deficit as we sit here today?
The current deficit in this budget that we're presenting today, Commissioner?
Yes.
Is approximately $4.6 million. It's $4,568,000, I think Mary Jo told me.
Now, does that include the $1.5 million payout from the new contract we're going to be getting with...
It doesn't include that revenue, yes, Commissioner.
Okay. Does it include the $1.2 million that we're going to be receiving from the sale of the Visitors Bureau?
It includes nothing from the sale of the Visitors Bureau because my understanding is that has not been essentially certified at this point, so we're still waiting to see if and when that happens. So, we did not include that revenue in the budget.
Okay. But once we receive that, that'll bring it down to about $3.4 million, the deficit.
Theoretically, correct, Commissioner.
Okay. Now, with regard to the contract that the prison had with GTL up until this point, they received 52% of all revenue generated from phone service, 25% for the tablets. And I renegotiated a new contract which is going to generate additional revenue. Was that considered?
Conservatively, we estimated the revenue for next year based on the current year revenue, so increases in commission rates were not considered.
So, Mary Jo was kind enough yesterday to tell me that to date, we received a total of $419,398 from the GTL revenue at the prison. You estimate that we generate around $60,000 a month, so I would say about $480 a year. So, just for the public, we don't have it on the agenda today because we're still waiting for the contract. The terms are all set. We're just waiting for the attorneys to go through the final draft of the contract, but I asked them to give us a projection for 2022 of how much income we're going to be receiving, and it's going to be $974,084, which is actually an increase of $494,084, so almost a half a million dollar increase from this year we're going to receive next year. So, that will further deplete the deficit. Is that correct?
That is correct. If we get that additional $400 and some thousand, it would reduce the deficit by that amount.
Okay. And although there are some, and I think I sent these to you as well, as well as the commissioners and Chief of Staff and Tracy, over the course of the, I know some of the expense, like the $1.5 million is in the $1.2 million from the sale, they're one-time revenue sources. I'd just like to point out also, and this will be discussed more at the next meeting, is that over the course of the five-year contract that's been renegotiated, because we were getting 52% of revenue generated, now we're getting 75 from the phone services of GTL, and we're getting 25% of the tablets, plus I negotiated an increase of 2% in year two, 4% in year three, 6% in year four, 8% in year five. This total five-year contract is going to bring in $4,959,626. So, that is increased revenue from before. Is that accurate?
That is correct.
Okay.
And that does not, I believe the number that you just read does not include the upfront money either. It isn't.
Right. If you added the upfront money of 1.5, the total contract for the five years was, is And just so everybody knows, they, their initial offer, you know, was, they didn't want to give us a lump sum payment. It was going to be like $225,000 a year for five years, and we got them to $1.5 million upfront. So, we are working on that. And additionally, Attorney Nateriani and I, we, Commissioner Nateriani and I, I promoted you.
Right.
Although, I don't know, is that disputable? Commissioner Nateriani and I, we cut expenses by $1,190,027. Does that sound right? Almost like 1.2 million?
That sounds, yeah, in that ballpark, correct, Commissioner.
Okay. Let's see here.
So, that eliminates the million-dollar increase in the prison budget for this '22 then?
Talk about that.
I'm sorry, Commissioner, I don't understand your question. Say it again.
Well, in the budget that I have shows a million-dollar increase in the prison budget, so that'll eliminate that. So, that takes that...
The upfront payment that we will get, yes, and the, based on the commissioner's calculations. And again, we didn't include the continuing revenue. We did not include any increases. We base the continuing revenue, the monthly revenue that we receive, on the prior contract and the amounts we received last year.
And basically not...
But the upfront payment, the million and a half, essentially, yes, causes the prison to not have a million-dollar increase. It's reduced by the amount of the upfront payment.
And like I indicated, the ongoing revenue is going to double, so that's something that at the end of next year, or towards the end of next year, will further decrease the deficit for this year. Because this is, the way you explained it to me is that this is like an estimated or an approximate budget based upon expenses and revenue for next year.
That's correct.
But we won't know until the end of next year how right we are because the money has to come in.
That's correct.
Okay.
I mean, if I may, Commissioner, on that issue, we budgeted a little bit more than a $2 million deficit for this year, last year when we did the budget, and it appears, and again, anything can happen between now and December 31st, obviously, it appears that the deficit for 2021 should be a little bit less than the $2 million that we anticipated last year.
Well, we're at 4.6 minus the 1.2 for the Visitors Bureau brings us down to 3.4, and then we're doubling our revenue for next year from GTL, so that's about a half a million dollars, so that puts us around 2.9. So, if we took our 19.8 surplus minus our 2.9, and I, yes, I'm doing this on paper because I can't do that stuff in my head, we still have 16.9 million in surplus, which is still more than the 10%. Is that accurate?
That sounds well correct, yes.
Okay. And I just want to say, Mr. Preate indicated that we rubber stamped it. We didn't. I mean, I have, this is my binder, and I went through and every single line item. And in addition to having those budget hearings, I contacted numerous row officers and directors while I was doing that to ask questions that I had. And we also notified them at our cabinet meeting recently that next year we want more itemized. So, I think a $1.2 million expense cut is a good place to start. You would think that with the $145 million budget that you could just cut here, cut there, but the bottom line is that, you know, for example, the sheriff's office, we added buildings. They're now manning the prison. They're now manning, I believe magistrate's offices, or they will be. They're now manning the new central court building. With regard to prison overtime, we're having a hard time, just like everybody else, trying to get people to work. So, you know, we're hoping all that will improve in 2022, so I'm optimistic.
Let me just say, first of all, in deference to what Commissioner Sherrack said, there is no guarantee with Standard &amp; Poor's.
Right.
As I said, they set a standard of 10% of your annual budget as the standard, that they like to see at least that amount of accumulated surplus. However, we were reviewed by Standard &amp; Poor's without any significant bad stuff happening. I mean, we've been depleting the surplus a little bit. It had peaked at, I think it was $28 million in 2017 or '18, and we have been depleting that a little bit through budget utilization over the last couple of years. But Standard &amp; Poor's didn't downgrade us, but we have a negative outlook. It's an A-minus rating now, which is still a good rating, with a negative outlook. And my only point is that there is no guarantee with Standard &amp; Poor's. The 10% that I said, so the 14.5 million, as you pointed out, if things go well, we anticipate that the budget surplus or the accumulated surplus should be 16. some million dollars. And while that's true, that's not a guarantee that we don't get downgraded. Again, Standard &amp; Poor's does what they do, and they, again, added the negatives to our A rating this year, which was kind of a half of a downgrade, but again, going forward, we don't know what they'll do.
And you indicated to me yesterday when we were talking that they probably won't re-rate us, for lack of a better word, until next, the end of next summer, correct?
Typically, that's what they do. If we have no reason to reach out to them for a rating, like doing a bond issue or something like that, to do a specific rating for a bond issue, then typically they take a look at Lackawanna County's standing about once a year. And as I said, this year it was August, September that they looked at the county and they released the rating, I think it was in... they released the rating, I think it was in, in early October this year, I believe. So that, I would be surprised if by the fall of next year, Standard &amp; Poor's doesn't take a look at the county again.
Okay. Anybody else?
No.
No, I'm sorry. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
So, this is the second reading, so I believe we are voting on it. So, do I have a motion to approve the budget ordinance number 274-21-0289?
Motion.
I'll second it. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Or on the question? Sorry. On the question?
Yeah, I have a call.
Go ahead.
I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a motion. We tabled this. There's no rush. I don't know what the hurry is, and we need to continue to look at this. I, I, I'm not going to accept any deficit in the budget. I, I'm not convinced. Not convinced.
I, I guess I'm just confused, Chris, as to what you're doing to try to.
The Home Rule Charter says we have to do it today, December 1st.
That is correct, Commissioner.
That is correct.
December 1st is the deadline for the approval of the next year's budget.
Right. Okay. I made a motion. You seconded it. We voted.
No, no, no. Okay, sorry, Mr. Commissioner. On the question?
On the question.
Mr. Scharmak made a motion. Is there a second?
No.
No.
Now, you can make your motion.
Now, we can move.
Okay. On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
No.
Okay. Ordinance, first reading, 21 dash zero, 0290, ordinance number 275. This is the implementing a county vehicle registration fee.
Thank you, Madam Commissioner. This is the first reading, and there'll be a second reading on December 15th. Ordinance implementing the fee for local use as provided for by Title 75 PACS Section 1935, allowing the county to impose a county fee of $5 for each non-exempt vehicle registered to an address located within the county's political board. Whereas, Lackawanna County is a third-class county existing pursuant to the laws of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, and whereas Act 89 of 2013 amending Title 75 PACS Section 1935 allows all counties within the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, at their discretion, excuse me, to impose a $5 county fee for each and every non-exempt vehicle registered to an address located within said county, and whereas Title 75 PACS Section 1935 requires each county that elects to implement this fee to pass an ordinance authorizing the same. And whereas, beginning January 1st, 2015, Title 75 PACS Section 1935 authorizes the county to enact an ordinance to levy the county fee. And whereas, Title 75 PACS Section 1935 requires the county to notify the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation on or following the enactment date at a minimum 90 days prior to the effective date of the ordinance. And whereas, upon levy of, by, whereas, upon levy by ordinance of the county and due notice to the department, Title 75 PACS Section 1935 directs the department to collect the county fee at the time of vehicle registration and to deposit receipts into a, into a fee for a local use fund. And whereas, Title 75 PACS Section 1935 directs that the money, the money paid into the fee for local use funds shall be distributed by the county for, to each participating county, by the department to each participating county in accordance with the amount collected from said county. And whereas, funds payable to a county from the fee of local use funds shall be used by the county for transportation purposes or be allocated by the county to municipalities in the county in accordance with Title 75 PACS Section 9010C. And whereas, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County has determined that it is in the best interest of the county to impose the $5 county fee authorized pursuant to Title 75 PACS Section 1935, and we hereby present the following ordinance, number 2524, for approval. Now, therefore, the Board of Commissioners of County Lackawanna hereby ordains and follows, number one, enact this ordinance, levy a $5 county fee pursuant to Title 75 PACS Section 1935 for each non-exempt vehicle registered to an address located in Lackawanna County. Section two, if the section, subsection, paragraph, sentence, clause, or phrase of this ordinance is declared unconstitutional or invalid for any reason by any court of competent jurisdiction, such decisions shall not affect validity of the remaining portions of this ordinance. Section three, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect 90 days after an enactment required by law. Madam Commissioner, and this is the first reading. Like I said, we'll have a second reading on December 15th. However, here to speak upon that today is our Director of Roads and Bridges, Mr. Larry Lucasik, and our Engineer of Record, Mr. Frank Suma. If there's any questions about the status of our bridges, all commissioners have been handed a packet of the status of the bridges, the roads, and the three dams that are owned in Lackawanna County.
Hi, guys.
Good morning, Commissioners.
I want to start with, how many bridges do we have total in Lackawanna County?
154.
And we have about 36 miles of roadway?
Roughly, yes.
Which I think Chief Jeffers put into perspective, that's like from here to Hazelton, right?
About that.
Okay.
That's 36 miles. That's not lane miles. When you get up to Montage Mountain, and there's four lanes wide or five lanes wide, that's just miles of road, yes.
Okay. And you gave us a document here, and there's 12 bridges that are over 20 feet?
We have more, there's 40 bridges over 20 feet.
40, okay.
Those are 12 bridges that are in bad shape.
Oh, okay, all right. So, these 12, you have under status that there's two closed, and then one, two, three, four, five, seven posted. What does that mean, posted?
That means they're in a state where they can't take the maximum load that Pennsylvania says, they're, they're downgraded on the weights that go across them.
And then there's two for not rated. What does that mean?
That means that you can, right now, you can go over them with the, the maximum load that Pennsylvania allows on the roads.
Would you consider our broad, our roads, our roads and, or our bridges to be in disrepair?
Yes.
Okay. Um, do you guys want to talk about why you think that, you know, Frank, do you want, I mean, you guys were there about the $5 fee?
Yeah, I mean, I can, I can speak to it, just to kind of simplify the process, so we understand what we're talking about. The, PennDOT has set up a program where the, the county, PennDOT on behalf of the county will collect an additional $5 every time a vehicle is registered within this county. PennDOT will process that and return it to the county with no additional administrative costs. It all comes back to Lackawanna County, and it must be spent on, on our local roads and bridges. PennDOT also is offering an incentive where they will match the first $2 million collected. So, in a sense, it's, we'd be leaving state money on the table if, if we don't enact this program. As we, you know, we heard other budget concerns. Right now, we're in a situation where every year, we're continuing to get less liquid fuels funding. It's been going down each year, even prior to the pandemic. So, this, there's really, you know, other than dipping into capital funds, there's really no way to close the gap. Right now, we're running in a situation where we are, we don't have enough money to, to keep up year over year with the, the required costs for the infrastructure we own.
And I, I think I've talked about this before, but just for the general public's knowledge, this program that with, with PennDOT matching up to $2 million is actually closed to all other counties, and we actually are kind of, for lack of a better term, grandfathered in because we expressed an interest back when it was open. So, if we don't take advantage of this now, we'll lose the $2 million.
Correct.
And it, it's my understanding that it was, it's estimated that we will generate the county, from the $5 fee, $850,000 a year, based upon the number of, of vehicles in Lackawanna County. So, the way it would work is, for year one, if we generated just 850 flat, they would match that, and that entire, that entire money right there, our 850 and their 850 would have to be used at, on bridges of 20 feet or over. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And then second, the second year, if we generated the same, they'd match the same, and that money, again, has to be used on bridges 20 feet or over, which are.
If I'm not mistaken, Commissioner, I think that they said they would give us the $2 million upfront, once we signed.
Oh, okay.
I think that was the last meeting we had with Larry from PennDOT.
Okay.
I think he said he's going to give us the $2 million right upfront, once we pass this ordinance, so that we can get started on some of our bridges that are closed right now.
That's even better. So, then, the $2 million that they would give us, and then $2 million of our money, so that's $4 million, would have to be utilized, though, on the bridges 20 feet or over?
Correct.
Okay. And they're the ones that are in most disrepair, it appears?
Yes.
And then, any money that we generate beyond that, we are able to use for bridges under, or like roadways?
Other bridges, roadways, correct.
All right. So, anybody have any?
What about the, what about the money that's coming from the, from the President, you know, from the federal government for infrastructure?
Well, we don't know yet if there's going to be any money trickling down to us. We don't know how much money's going to trickle down to us, if we get any at all, and we don't know when that's going to happen. Right now, we have two bridges over 20 feet that are, actually, three, College Avenue, but that's in, that's in design with PennDOT already. We have two bridges that are closed right now that need to be fixed. We have another bridge that has a temporary bridge over the top of it for three years now, and the limit for a temporary bridge is five years. That has to be designed and replaced within two years. We also have G.C. Smith Road in Elmhurst is the only way in and out of the sewer plant in Elmhurst Township. PennDOT is going to replace the two bridges on 435, right there, by G.C. Smith. They're going to put a temporary bridge in over Roaring Brook to let the people go around. That's a perfect time for us to replace the bridge on G.C. Smith Road. But again, that's going to happen within two years, and we don't have the money, if we don't do this, to get that bridge replaced. If not, if PennDOT does their bridges and takes out their temporary road, looking at another $2 million to put a temporary road back in just to get around the bridge until we can get it designed. I mean, I don't want to see another fee or another tax, but there's no money in the capital anymore for bridges or roads, and they're deteriorating terribly.
I'm sure that residents don't want to see it either, so.
Frank, as an engineer, and Larry, I think we can consider you an expert in roads and bridges at this point. You're both in agreement, and you're for the $5 fee. Is that accurate?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Could you, Larry, real quick, and Frank, could you tell the commissioners and the public, on average, when we, since we don't have capital funding for bridges, we apply for grants all the time, right? With PennDOT. What is the average wait before we receive the money? If you applied for a grant today for one particular bridge, how long before you guys see the money?
It, I mean, it depends on the grant source of the program. It could, it could be six months. It may, we, we could wait six months to hear we're unsuccessful in our application, or we only have partially funded. Then, depending on the funding source or the additional agencies that need to see design approvals, it could take another one to two years before we even have a bid package that could go to a contractor to construct the, the bridge that's, then, had been deteriorating for another two or three years.
And once you get into these bridges that are over 20 feet, you're talking of anywhere from a million, a million and a half dollars to get them replaced. If you're on a tip program with PennDOT, you only get $400,000 a year. So, if you have a bridge that's a million two, you're going to be waiting a lot of, a lot of years. They'll keep it in design, you got to do all kinds of environmental studies, and then PennDOT has to approve it. If there's an economy that comes back, you could be looking, we're looking, we're doing Govers Hill right now in Archibald. We're running three years already, we don't even have a design for it.
So, by the time you get the money from PennDOT?
You look in five years, by the time they actually.
We can't catch up, because further bridges are deteriorating.
College Avenue Bridge is 10 years now, it's still not replaced.
Okay. And we have two temporary bridges, one that's on year three, right? And that, you're only supposed to have them in for five years?
Right.
And then we just put in another one?
We're in the process of putting another one on Plank Road now, yeah, and that's a five-year limit also on that one.
Okay.
Are we planning on continuing this $5 fee once the match is met?
That's up to you, Commissioner, you know.
I think that will have to be voted on.
Or will it be $10 then?
I think PennDOT, I think they limit it to $5.
Yeah.
This could be repealed at any time, once, I mean, you're going to have to keep it for at least two years to.
Laino made a big hit in Luzerne County when they initiated it, so we'll.
Well, luckily, we're in Lackawanna County.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so that was just a first reading, and we will have the second reading on the 15th. Resolutions 21-0298, approving current payables.
Be resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the following payables. Lackawanna County's General Fund, numbers 332168-333233, inclusive tolling $1,261,102.60. Electronic fund transfers, including all payroll accounts, tolling $3,529,887.30. Adopted at regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on December 1st, 2021. Madam Commissioner.
I'm assuming everybody's had an opportunity to review the current payables. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
On the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Resolution 21-0291, entering into an addendum.
Be resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby enter into an addendum with the alcohol monitoring systems incorporated on behalf of the Department of Adult Probation and Parole for Software Implementation. Adopted at regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on December 1st, 2021. Madam Commissioner, here to speak upon that is the Court Administrator, Mr. Frank Castellano.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is an addendum to a contract originally entered into in 2019 by Lackawanna County on behalf of the court with the SCRAMS Corporation. This involves the Touch Point Program, which, as you know, is the general supervision dashboard for our defendants under the supervision of the court. The original contract in 2019 included our treatment court clients, our pre-trial service clients, and then we added our fresh start clients. This will now add all defendants under the supervision of adult probation. This is a client-based monitoring system where the defendant will download the app to their cell phone or mobile device, and that allows their probation officer to have real-time updates regarding that client, as well as the judge who's supervising that defendant to have updates as well. It provides information such as employment status, treatment status, residence status, drug and alcohol status, as well as GPS monitoring. It also reminds the defendants about upcoming court appearances and appointments, and as we discussed previously, this is funded through a fee which is assessed to the defendant as part of their typical supervision fee, as well as the additional costs are covered by the grant received by the county and the court from the All One Foundation. So, we respectfully request that this addendum be accepted and passed.
This program really does like, improve communication between probationees and probation officers. It's really a, a good program. Do I have a motion to approve 21-0291?
Motion.
Second.
On the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution 21-0292, entering into a service agreement with Top Business Solutions.
Be resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve and enter into a managed print service agreement with Top Business Solutions for 36 months for toner, maintenance, and onsite service, due cost $5,118.37 a month. Adopted at a regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on December 1st, 2021. Madam Commissioner, here to speak upon that is our Director of Purchase, Mr. Joe Wesley.
Morning, Commissioners. This printer service management agreement will be a, a three-year contract period, which will expire at the same time as our current copier contract service agreement. That'll allow us to keep both contracts operating at the same time, and then in three years, when we go out to bid, we'll be able to bid both the printer and the copier contract. It represents a, a small monthly savings from the current contract, and it also added 61 new printers at a $1 per year lease.
Does anybody have any questions?
Was this bid out, too?
No, this was, this was not bid out. This was based upon the current contract, wanted to keep both of them together. This was an extension of the old contract.
But wasn't, was it worthwhile putting out a?
It was not, Commissioner, because at this time, with the conditions of availability of printers, with the shortage of supply, we currently have, our current copier contract is with Top Copy, so it was beneficial to keep them both with Top Copy, but in three years, we'll be able to go out and bid both printers and copiers.
And there's one printer where you're able, it was kind of like a thorn on our side, it was like $3,400 a month?
Correct. There's a copier that Top Copy is going to take back at their cost. It's being returned early on the lease program.
By 18 months or something, right?
Correct, correct.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve 21-0292?
Motion.
Second.
On the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Resolutions 21-0293, approving provider contracts with OYFS.
Be resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lockawanna County is hereby approve the Office of Youth and Family Service Provider Contract for the fiscal year July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2022 with Bethana Community Specialist Corporation, Outside-In School of Experimental, Experiential Education Incorporated, and Summit Schools Incorporated. Adopted at a regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lockawanna County held on December 1st, 2021. Madam Commissioner, here to speak upon that is the Administrative Officer of Human Services, Ms. Kathy Snyder.
I'm here on behalf of Bill Browning. He's the Director of Human Services and Office of Youth and Family Services. So first, the Office of Youth and Family Services. We have four provider contracts on the agenda for fiscal year 2122. The first one's for Bethana. This is a kinship placement for a child in foster care. And kinship means that a child is being placed with a relative. The other three contracts, Community Specialists, Outside-In, and Summit School, are for older youth in foster care. They're difficult to place due to significant drug and alcohol issues. The reimbursement rate for all of these four contracts are approximately 80% from the state. And these contracts are to be used as an on-needed basis.
Anybody have any questions, Frank? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve 21-0293?
Motion.
Second.
On the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. 21-0294, approving the homeless assistance program agreements.
Be resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lockawanna County is hereby approve agreements for the Department of Human Services and its providers for the homeless assistance program agreement for fiscal year 2021 through 2022 for the following. Kathryn McCauley Center, Catholic Social Services, and the United Neighborhood Centers. Adopted at a regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lockawanna County held on December 1st, 2021. Madam Commissioner, once again, here is Ms. Snyder.
Again, I'm here on behalf of Bill Browning, Director of Human Services, to speak on these human service contracts. The homeless assistance grant, these three contracts on the agenda, they're for fiscal year 2122. They're annual renewals to provide the homeless assistance program. Kathryn, Catholic Social Services, the contract totals $80,000 for rental assistance and case management services, where a mother and child can stay into housing for up to a year and they receive help to obtain employment. Kathryn McCauley Center, the contract totals for $29,330 for bridge housing, where a mother and child can stay into housing for up to a year and they receive help to provide employment. And United Neighborhood Centers, the contract total is $110,000 to provide rental assistance, case management, and emergency shelter.
Do I have a motion to approve 21-0294?
Motion.
Second.
On the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. 21-0295, entering into an agreement with the NEPA Youth Shelter.
Whereas Lockawanna County is a county of the third class operating in govern pursuant to the Home Rule Charter, whereas Lockawanna County and others were affected and significantly impacted by the worldwide COVID-19 pandemic, which arose and was declared in March of 2020. Whereas many nonprofit agencies worldwide, and particularly in Lockawanna County, were faced with devastating economic and financial challenges and losses resulting from the worldwide COVID-19 pandemic. Whereas these nonprofit agencies here in Lockawanna County experience a continuing need for financial and economic assistance so they may continue existing and providing services to the residents of Lockawanna County. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners does hereby enter into an agreement with the NEPA Youth Shelter via 41 Wyoming Avenue Scranton nonprofit 501(c)(3) organization to provide basic essentials for underprivileged Lockawanna County youth ages 14 through high school graduation who were negatively impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic in accordance with the American Rescue Plan. The program will provide for, but is not limited to, additional space to gather, essentials such as food, clothing, bathrooms, toiletries, as well as educational support and counseling services. This grant will fund the subrep. I'm stuck. Subrep.
Where's the word?
That one.
Subrecipient.
Thank you, Frank.
Got it.
The NEPA Youth Shelter, which was negatively impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic in accordance with the American Rescue Plan. Subsequently, the grant will assist with adopting safer operating procedures whether periods of closure or mitigated financial hardship resulting from the COVID-19 health emergency. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of County of Lockawanna does hereby award the following American Rescue Plan grant to the NEPA Youth Shelter for the funding of the NEPA Youth Shelter program to benefit Lockawanna County youth who have been negatively impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic in the amount of $50,000. Be it further resolved, the Board of Commissioners of the County of Lockawanna does hereby direct the Director of Planning and Economic Development to sign and authorize all documents related to this grant program. Adopted at a regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lockawanna County held on December 1st, 2021. Madam Commissioner, here to speak upon that, representing the Director of Economic Development is our business, is our community development manager, Ms. Peg Pecani.
Hi. Good morning. As Chief Jeffers said, this is an agreement between Lockawanna County and the NEPA Youth Shelter, which is a nonprofit 501(c)(3) organization. It is a one-time grant of $50,000 for this, for the NEPA Shelter to utilize towards administering their program. This program is the only program in Lockawanna County for the underprivileged youth. The closest program is in Allentown, so.
Does anybody have any questions? Do I have a motion to approve 21-0295?
Motion.
On the question? All in favor?
Aye.
21-0296, establishing the Lockawanna County Nonprofit COVID-19 Response Grant Program. Brian.
Whereas Lockawanna County is a county of the third class operating in govern pursuant to the Home Rule Charter, whereas Lockawanna County and others were affected and significantly impacted by the worldwide COVID-19 pandemic, which arose and was declared in March of 2020. Whereas many nonprofit agencies worldwide, and particularly in Lockawanna County, were faced with devastating economic and financial challenges and losses resulting from the worldwide COVID-19 pandemic. Whereas these nonprofit agencies here in Lockawanna County experienced a continuing need for financial and economic assistance so that they may continue existing and providing services to the residents of Lockawanna County. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners has hereby established the Lockawanna County Nonprofit COVID-19 Response Grant Program through the American Rescue Plan Act funds to assist tax-exempt organizations under the Internal Revenue Code, Section 501(c)(3), in accordance with the American Rescue Plan. This grant will fund, what is it?
Subrecipient.
Thank you, Frank.
You got it.
Lockawanna County nonprofits who were negatively impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic. Subsequently, this grant will assist nonprofits with adopting safer operating procedures, whether periods of closure and/or mitigated financial hardship resulting from the COVID-19 public health emergency. Be it further resolved, the Board of Commissioners of the County of Lockawanna is hereby direct the Director of Planning and Economic Development to sign and authorize all documents related to this grant program. Adopted at a regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lockawanna County held on December 1st, 2021. Madam Commissioner, once again, here is Ms. Pecani.
Hi, again. I'm just here to speak about the nonprofit grant, which is going live today. It is a one-time grant of up to $25,000 to help our nonprofits who provide vital services to the community. They have faced devastating economic and financial challenges as a direct result of the pandemic. The grant can be found on Lockawanna County's website, lockawannacounty.org.
Any questions, Peggy? Do I have a motion to approve 21-0296?
Motion.
Second.
On the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 21-0297, entering into a lease agreement.
Be resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lockawanna County is hereby enter into a lease agreement with Good Eye Properties LLC, 22 Swett Lane, Covington Township, PA, 18444, to lease approximately 2,000 square feet at 1629 Princeton Avenue Scranton for the use, for the use of the magistrate's office. A monthly total of $2,600. Term to commence February 1st, 2024 and end on January 31st, 2030. Adopted at a regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lockawanna County held on December 1st, 2021. Madam Commissioner, here to speak upon that is the teacher.
The Speller.
Chief Solicitor, Frank Rizario.
Thank you, Chief Jeffers. Good morning, everyone. This is an extension of an already existing contract for Magisterial District Court 45-1-03 over in Southside, which is Magistrate District Judge Joanne Corbett's location. The current lease is set to expire in February of 2024. And the current monthly lease amount is $2,300 a month. We had the opportunity to extend that for an additional six years, which we've done from February 2024 until January 2030. That is to coincide with Magisterial District Judge Joanne Corbett's term. And there will be a modest increase in the rent of $300 a month for the entirety of that six-year term. So the rent will increase from $2,300 to $2,600 a month beginning February 2024. So we'll remain under the current lease agreement until that expires. That's a responsible and modest increase. And I would recommend the Commissioners consider passing that lease.
Frank, can you explain why we're doing this so soon?
Sure. Be happy to. So as, you know, the Commissioners are aware, and perhaps the public is, we've had to do a number of, expend a number of monies to do build-outs and things such as security cameras and importing some plastic fixtures in many of the magistrate offices as a result of the pandemic. So in that regard, we obviously have expended some costs. So it makes sense to continue to lease that particular location. I've checked with Magistrate District Judge Corbett. She's comfortable there. The property owner is responsive to any requests that she has. And it's been a good relationship. So it's fiscally responsible, I think, for us to be able to lock in that particular lease for an additional six years until 2030. And again, at a modest increase of $300 a month. That modest increase remains steady from 2024 all the way up through 2030. So for those reasons, I'm recommending that we enter into it at this time.
Do I have a motion to approve 21-0297?
Motion.
Second.
On the question? All in favor?
Aye.
21-0299, entering into a third amendment to lease agreement.
Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lockawanna County is hereby enter into a third amendment to lease agreement with Samuel P. Colara, 39 Garfield Avenue, Carbondale, for the premises located at 38 North Main Street, Carbondale, for the use as the magistrate's office. It's a six-year term to commence on January 1st, 2022 and expire on December 31st, 2027. Adopted at a regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lockawanna County held on December 1st, 2021. Madam Commissioner, once again, here is Solicitor Rizario.
Thank you again, Chief Jeffers. Much like the lease prior, this is another extension of an already existing lease. This is for Magisterial District Court 45-3-03 up in Carbondale for Magistrate District Judge Sean McGraw. The current lease is set to expire on December 31st of this year. So we've entered into, or we're hoping to enter into, a six-year extension, which will commence January of 2022 and conclude in December of 2027. Again, this is aligned with Magistrate McGraw's current elective term. So we're trying to establish these leases in accordance with the existing terms for all the Magisterial District Justices if we can. So that's why it's a six-year extension. And the current lease amount is $1,600 a month. And we've agreed to an increase, modest increase, of $100 a month per year for the first five years, capping out at $2,100, with the sixth year remaining steady at $2,100. So it's a $500 increase over the six-year term of the lease. If there's any questions?
Okay, do I have a motion to approve 21-0299?
Motion.
Second.
On the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Opportunity for the public to address the board.
Again, a little repeat performance, Carlin Preate. I just wanted to respond to the conversation between CFO Durkin and Commissioner Dominic. One of the things in terms of a bond rating and a bond review, bond agencies look at anticipated normal revenues and expenses. Anytime you have one-time revenue coming in, it's discarded. It's extraordinary revenue and so forth. So to the extent that we had the one-time revenue on that one contract of over $1 million, and then again, the sale of the visitor center of 1.2 million, again, it's one-time revenue, they disregard that. So again, it doesn't, it's not a favorable, it's not a favorable situation with respect to the county. And again, we heard the information regarding roads and bridges. Anytime you have a sale of a capital asset, like for example, a visitor center, why don't we put that money into the roads and bridges rather than paying operating expenses? That's sound financial management. It's not putting sale of capital assets or one-time revenues into the normal operating budget. Those should go into a capital budget to the extent that we heard that a lot of these things go wanting. Second of all, in terms of the way the budget was presented, Commissioner Dominic indicated, well, we have this money coming in and this money coming in, and it's not in the budget. Well, wait a minute. If it's, if the money is coming in, why isn't it in the budget? You know, you would look at, a budget is based upon anticipated revenues and anticipated expenses. If there's additional items that are anticipated, it should be in the budget, not just to budget what's last year. That's not the way budgets are supposed to be processed. That's the whole point. Another point that I want to make out is, why don't we look at getting the state involved under the STAMP program, which is an operational financial review of county activities? And it includes everything from review of union contracts to operational and things of that nature. Costs maybe $100,000 to $150,000. 50% is paid by the state. Why don't we have the state come in and take a look at that? It may help us with respect to a bond reading. Again, another suggestion, we should probably open up and relook at the Home Rule Charter. There's a lot of things in that charter that is not applicable right now. And there are certain things that we are doing that it's, that's not stated in the charter. I mean, the first elephant in the room is the consolidation of three of our elected role officers. Doesn't need to be three elected, or we could save a lot of money in there with technology. But again, that's the part of the Home Rule Charter that needs to be looked at. I look at Gary DeBily over there, the county controller. He's greatly expanded the controller's office. But that's well beyond what the controller's position states in the Home Rule Charter. That should be looked at. The finance group, very little mention is what the role of the finance group is in the Home Rule Charter. Again, these are situations where I think that need to be looked at. Let's look at it. Let's have somebody look at the charter. Another thing, too, is, why don't we look at some of our assets that we are operating? For example, the Trolley Museum. It costs us over $550,000 in the Trolley Museum. We take in $100,000. Guess where the Trolley Museum is? It's right in the Steamtown Park. Maybe we should be thinking about checking with the park service. Maybe they want to operate the Trolley Museum. It's right there. I mean, these are common sense suggestions for the Commissioners to look at. And as I said, there's a lot of other things in that budget. Obviously, no one wanted to take a look at each department in its entirety. I know Chris had sent out a memo last night, or earlier this week, listing all of the items in the budget that should be addressed. But again, nobody wants to address it. Well, let's keep on doing what we're doing. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, we're going to move on to Commissioners' other business. Chris?
Nope. Just thank you, Mayfield Borough Mayor, and the members that came out. Thank you for having us today.
Jerry?
Thank you to everyone in Mayfield. It's a great place to come to. To, as far as Commissioner Schermack's memo the other day that Mr. Preate is referring to, some of the ideas are, you know, are sound and possible. Some of them are absolutely ridiculous. Some of them are absolutely ridiculous. You know, take out of the budget any unfund, any unfilled positions. There's positions that aren't filled. If they're not in the budget, we can't ever fill them. We have a shortage of COs in the prison. We can't hire them if it's not, if it's not in the budget. Okay? That's part of the problem, is the overtime. The overtime is there because we can't find COs. And that's one of many things. If, if you're, if you're paying attention to this stuff on a regular basis, some things aren't quite as simple as they appear. And again, you can take that out of the budget, but when you want to try to fill those positions, there's no money to do it. It's, you know, you can go through this with, like, Tom Durkin and Mary Jo Granahan do a phenomenal job. As far as the state coming in, I have no issue with them doing that, but understand, the state's usually in much worse shape than we are. Okay? You know, as far as Luzerne County and their, and their issue with repealing that $5 fee. Sit and watch a council meeting in Luzerne County for seven hours of absolute nonsense. Okay? We're, we're on the, on the airport authority with them, the airport board. It, it has changed dramatically in the last year or two years because of the change in the politics of it. And it's not for the better. I, I, again, everyone's got great ideas, but if you pay attention to some of the things that are going on a daily basis in Lackawanna County, all things considered, and our only way to get out of this, cost of, 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 the county government increases every year. We have seven unions we deal with regularly have to. We have CBAs, we have to agree, we have to follow. We have to increase revenue. Decreasing spending is not going to be the answer. We have to get, that's the reason for the reassessment. We have to reassess so that we can do it. People aren't going to be hurt by a reassessment. The people that aren't paying anything are the ones that are going to be hurt. We're going to get more properties on the tax roll. As far as one of the things in the budget is new people, more people in the tax assessor's office. They're behind schedule. They can't keep up with it. There's not enough people in there. People that have properties, that subdivided properties and, and aren't on the tax roll because the tax assessor's office can't keep up with us. So they're not going to be taxed. So that's money that we can generate, we should generate, which is legal and respectable, and everyone agrees it's fair. That's it.
Jerry, let me just...
No. I'm sorry. I'm going to first address a few...
Excuse me, ma'am. Can I ask you a question?
The time for, the time for residents to speak has been concluded. We give the residents... We give the residents a time in the beginning of the meeting and at the end. We're now at...
I was late coming in, so I don't get any time, I guess, right?
We're now at the Commissioners Other Business. We have to stay according to the agenda.
From afterwards.
What?
From afterwards.
We can talk to you after...
It's a simple question. I just want to know, how many COs are short in the prison?
I know they did a round of, they were looking for...
I think about eight or 10.
Yeah.
Or that increases the revenue, the way to call it. But go, go ahead.
I think it was like sometime like 13 or 14, and then they hired like eight or 10 of them, and then some of them quit during training, after training. It's just very difficult to get people to, to work, and particularly in that type of an, I mean, it's a tough environment to work. It's not an easy job.
Are they civil service positions?
No. I don't believe so, right? No. Okay. So I want to just address a few things. I agree and disagree with Jerry just a little bit. We do need to build the tax base. It takes time. But I also agree that we need to continue to cut costs. So next year, I will be doing the same thing as I'm doing this year, but, you know, things have to be done in, what word am I looking for, Frank? Since you're a dictionary over there.
In due time.
And, yeah. Like, you know, it, it can't all be done at once.
There's an order.
Right. So I'm going to continue to look at that. The memo that we received, or the correspondence back and forth from, from Commissioner Shermack, I think it was received on November 19th. At that point, we're at the tail end of, of the budget process and trying to get the budget completed. So in the future, I hope, are any concerns or memos or questions or suggestions or ideas are given a little bit sooner than that. The, you're right in regard to Mr. Preate, the two one-time payments, but we are generating revenue at the prison with regard to that GTL contract. The reason why it's not included in the budget is because I just got done negotiating the contract. We used to use a company called Precies to do so, and we got rid of Precies because they were charging about $140,000 a year, and I felt as an attorney, I can do a better job, and frankly, I think I did. And I did it by myself. I negotiated an amazing contract, if I may say so, myself, and we just got the projection revenue, revenue projection from GTL yesterday, so with the numbers that I had given during Tom's conversation. So that's why they weren't included. As far as us not looking at each department, again, I looked at each department, every single one. All the departments, all the, the, the row officer departments, I went through the entire budget from front to back. So that is not true that we're not looking at each department because I, I did. And moving on from the budget, something positive. So the Women's Resource Center reached out to the county because they are in need of certain items for the people that they support. And what we did is, we did it countywide. We're going to do another push email, but we, we set up, we, via email, we asked all our employees to contribute $5. And for each $5, they get one chance. So if you contribute 15, you get three chances. And then we're having, we had our first round of picks on this past Monday. Next Monday, we're going to pick seven more, and then the next Monday after that, it's going to be seven more. And what I'm referring to are gift cards. I, both Brenda Sacco and I, and my assistant Shannon Taylor, called local businesses and asked them to donate gift cards. We have great employees, but we wanted to give them an incentive to donate to the Women's Resource Center. And so when they donate and, and their names are put into some sort of electronic wheel that my assistant came up with, that I have no idea how it works, they, we draw gift cards, and then, you know, people can, can have an opportunity to win gift cards from many places downtown. So I just wanted to give a shout out to the companies or to the businesses downtown that they, as soon as I asked, they immediately responded with the yes, no hesitation. So they are Subway, Amendalaro, Pizza by Pappas, Alexander Salon, Lavish, Pink Petal, Two Brothers, Downtown Deli, our Carolyn Janelle, Mama Mia's, Cafe Rinaldi, Berlous Original Hoagie, and Posh, and Commonwealth Coffee. So for our employees, our next poll is going to be on December 6th, and the gift cards up for grabs are the Amendalaro, Lavish, Pink Petal, Mama Mia's, Cafe Rinaldi, Berlous, Berlous, am I saying that right? Berlous?
Berlous.
I never heard of that before.
It's in Muhid.
Berlous Original Hoagie and Pizza by Pappas, and then the final drawing will be on 12/13 for Alexander's, Two Brothers, Downtown Deli, Two from Cafe Rinaldi, Berlous Original Hoagie again, and Commonwealth Coffee. So we're asking our employees to please continue to donate if possible. They also have a list of items. It's, it's a wish list that my, my assistant has. You can contact her at Taylor, T-A-Y-L-O-R-S, at lackawannacounty.org, and she can tell you, she can give you a list or tell you what's on there, how to get it, and if you have any items that anyone wants to donate, you can bring them to us and we'll make sure that they, they get them. But it's, it's Christmas time, and they do great work there. So, and I also wanted to say that we kind of went over it really quickly, but the $50,000 that we gave to the NEPA, NEPA Youth, these kids, like, there are kids that are like homeless, and we talked about this at the work session last week, and I've been like really struggling with it since, to be perfectly honest with you. I mean, it's kids from 14 and up that don't have anywhere to go and don't have just necessities. And some of them are 18, where they, they max kind of out of the system, but they, they're still, you know, maybe in school, and they, they have nowhere to go, and they're, they're homeless, and it's, it's so sad and depressing. So I'm, I'm very glad that we were able to give them that money. And then we had a meeting afterwards about trying to get additional items and placement for some of these kids, because the thought of them being without anybody, like, at Christmas, really kills me, to be honest with you. So, so if anyone is, is looking to help, they also have a wish list. It's on their Facebook page. Hold on a minute. JJ, can you help me?
It's, it's actually on their own website, nepayouthshelter.com. They have an entire wish list on their third page of, of the website.
Okay. So if anyone can help, I mean, just put that picture in your mind, if it was, you know, somebody, like, a child by him or herself, or with other children, basically on the streets, so. All right. Do I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Do I have a, on the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.